Okay, thank you ladies and gentlemen. And I know our auditor controller would like to make a two-minute presentation on the internal audits. So Paul?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Board, Mr. Orr, Ms. Walls. I'm Paul Angulo and I have the privilege and tremendous honor of serving as Auditor Controller. There are many exciting things going on in our department. I want to make you aware of one of these. Recently, we had successful completion of the 26 mandated audits under the law. I'm not here just to tell you we did our job. I'm here to let you know we did our job under extraordinary circumstances. The audit team had gone from 19 personnel, but through budgetary constraints and attrition, had gone down to four. But the 26 audits still remain to be completed. We rallied, brought in two independent audit firms and several TAP employees to meet our goals. Applying a full-court press strategy, we'd like to acknowledge the departments for their cooperation. We'd like to acknowledge the Human Resources Services Team led by Tiffany Bates. We'd like to acknowledge Walter Mack from Purchasing Department for his expeditious handling of the RFQ. And Ms. Karen Johnson for her tremendous help from the Executive Office. Last but not least, I'd like to acknowledge the Auditor Controller Audit Team for their tremendous efforts in meeting this -- our goals. If they would stand up and be acknowledged. Are they here? Okay. Thank you very much for your efforts. And I'd like to just say that we're redefining cross-boundary collaboration. We could not have done it without the efforts and support of the other departments. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Paul. Great job. Appreciate the fine job you were doing under very difficult times. All right, we're now going to Board Comments. First Supervisor Benoit, and followed by Supervisor Buster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, it's noteworthy that on the first meeting in June of every year, the legislature has the White Suit Day to commemorate the beginning of the summer, and everybody wears a light suit. And we did that unofficially today, but I think it is that time of year. I just wanted to mention that I just returned late last night from Pittsburgh, attending the National Association of Counties where we had some very good speakers and presentations, including a very interesting one from the Director of the U.S. Department of Agriculture and some ideas gained there and other places I think may be helpful in our county. And I will pass some of those along to the Executive Director here later. But I did want to make special note of the fact that on Saturday night, the National Association of County Park and Recreation Officials, NACPRO, met. And Riverside County received three awards in the categories of Lake Skinner Improvements, Web Page Design, and Recognizing Our Strategic Planning Process. I think it's noteworthy that on a national basis, we should walk away with three of those awards at this national conference. And to Scott Bangal and the other members of the staff at our Parks Department, I'm proud to serve as the Chairman of the Parks Board, I offer my congratulations. Thank you.
All right, thank you Supervisor Benoit. Supervisor Buster.
No, I just wanted to repeat that if anyone needed an example of how one person can make a difference, a huge difference, in public service, they need to look no further than the career of Catherine Lynn. She really is tremendous county proud, and I'm sure she's inspired many of the other colleagues that she has at County Council's office and throughout the county. So we're really going to miss her. Just on the heels of the announcement yesterday that FY 11 and 12 CalPERS rate of return came in, not at what they projected, 1.7 percent, which of course is five or more points below what the long-term average has to be to keep the fund from acquiring even more unfunded liability, but at only 1 percent, less than the CalSTRS fund. That we need to monitor this very closely, and I know staff is doing that, but if there are numbers that need to be changed of our budget assumptions in the next few years because of CalPERS' very lackluster returns last year, let us know about them. Early intervention, as with things social in our budget times, is key, and I know our staff understands that.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Buster. Supervisor Ashley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to comment on a couple of things. One is on the jail ballot violence. You see, in Los Angeles County, they're having real problems, and it's being investigated, looked into now. And I want to point out, our Sheriff's Department and our jail system is being looked upon as an example of how it should be done. In fact, they're going to be coming out, talking to our sheriff, talking with our folks out here, thinking some ideas how to improve their system. So hats off to our Sheriff's Department and Correctional Department. The second thing is, I'm not going to be very complimentary, is I wanted to comment on the San Bernardino County Board Supervisors who voted on their action, where they voted unanimously to form a JPA with various cities to use eminent domain to seize and restructure poor-performing mortgages. The goal was to help troubled homeowners who are underwater with their mortgages. It's a praiseworthy goal, but it's questionable use of eminent domain. The delegates, it delegates municipal authority to a private party with a profit motive. The use of eminent domain generally in this plan poses significant legal and constitutional concerns. The use of eminent domain may not advance a public purpose, as it transfers ownership of performing loans from one private party to another. The strategy is use condemnation to acquire mortgage notes sparking controversy. The company would be shoehorned into place. Those opposed the proposal believe San Bernardino County area residents will find it harder or impossible to obtain credit. The county could become entangled in lengthy and expensive litigation with the horrors of existing loans. This program could further depress housing values by restricting the flow of credit to homeowners. I applaud Supervisor Rutherford in questioning the program and urge San Bernardino County to reconsider this proposal, because this proposal won't just hurt San Bernardino County, it'll hurt the entire inland empire or economy, and indirectly affect Riverside County. I think this is the wrong thing to do. It's almost right out of the Karl Marx playbook. I really deplore that action.
All right, thank you all for your comments. There are no further comments. Mr. Orr, any comments? Okay, there's no budget update from the state at this point in time. I would like to now call on our Court of the Board to put any additions, corrections, or deletions into the agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Additions are items 2.17, A5, and A6. Deletions none. Corrections, continue item 3.43 to July 31, 2012, and continue item 9.5 to August 28, 2012. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Keisha. With those amendments, I'll take a motion on the Admin Action Calendar and Consent Calendar, 1-1 through 2-2 through 2-17, with the, excuse me, 2-16. We did have a speaker, and I'll hold out speaker request on items 2-11 and 2-17. So with those exclusions, I'd like to have a motion on the balance. Second motion, in a second, please. Motion is 4-0. Supervisor Stone is not with us today, on vacation, hopefully enjoying some time off. We now have Mr. Robert Mayby, who's going to speak on item 2-11. Robert, do you need help with the projector? Do you need help with the projector?
Good morning, Robert Mayby speaking. I believe that the Board has a legal and moral obligation to stop all public nuisance cases until the ordinance is applied equally. I have here a memorandum from, that I received this morning from County Council Pamela Walls, and she describes how a public road, 300-foot of it has been blocked. And we also have, last year Supervisor Ashley made a report on the blockage of this public road, even going into detail to show the maps and the blockage. And I think that, I think this is morally and legally wrong to go after these people for public nuisance cases when you don't enforce the ordinances equally, and especially if it's a county agency that violates the rules and the ordinances. Do you think that's fair, Mr. Tabaloni?
Mr. Mayby, are you here on item 2-11?
Yes.
Specific, can you talk specifically to the item, please?
Okay, and I'm saying that you don't have a right to enforce an ordinance unless you enforce it equally. It's morally and it's legally wrong. But you continue to do it, and you continue to look the other way, it's a county agency that violates the county ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayby.
Just a comment response. This is the first district case. This is a finding that Mr. Mayby's talking about, item 2-11. These are finding of facts as to excessive outside storage and rubbish located on a property in the Moon Valley area. And we agree nothing that would change our opinion that there was a violation here. And, you know, Mr. Mayby has a point a lot of people bring up about code enforcement, that we're not sure that there's other cases out there that might be more egregious than the ones we're citing. And so we always say, well, let us know about those. And in fact, it's somewhat, particularly now with the cutback in code enforcement officers, I think we used to have 150 on staff, and now it's down to 80. We are struggling to get, take care of cases and to prioritize cases. So it's a good point, Mr. Mayby, that we try to prioritize. On the other hand, if you look at everybody that's speeding out there on the highway, they can't all be caught. And the CHP or the, I didn't want to debate with you, I didn't want to debate with you, but hopefully the deterrent effect of the cases we do bring here in code enforcement will also bring other properties and other property owners up to standard as well. So we would appreciate if you have, if you have any other code enforcement cases that you think are not being attended to and that are serious or more serious than item 2-11, let my office know.
We do have a motion in a second to, I'll second your motion. Item 2-11, 2.1, please. All right, motion carries 4-0, taking aside of 2.17. Mr. Grant.
My Mr. Chairman, Mrs. LaGuarda, and Pamela. 217, I pulled this because Mr. Hubbard is already affiliated with the AMR and apparently has been written about several times. And I feel that there's possibly a conflict of interest that's going on in this process. And I don't feel that Mr. Hubbard should go on to the position that he's requesting to go into. Peter Hubbard, he wants, he's from the American Response, and he's applying for the committee's commission and board, I'm trying to find this, the Workshop Investment Board. Now, would this be a conflict of interest in, in the relationship to his position? And I noticed that there's some blogs that have been written about him, and they're not very favorable. So what's this gentleman's background? We don't seem to have too much of his background in the relationship to taking over this position. And if he is related to the AMR, and I've pulled some other paperwork too, and the relationship to Riverside's ambulance rules may exceed authority. And it states that Riverside officials don't have the right to stop qualified ambulance companies from picking up patients in the city, according to the state agency that oversees the county emergency medical services. So I question the position of this gentleman. And the rights of the citizens seem to be distorted in the relationship to their ability to understand and the simplicity of these processes. So I would like to see an investigation as to if this is a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. This is a normal course of application process and appointments to the Workforce Investment Board wherein we look for, as members of the Board, and when we make these appointments, we look for individuals who we know with integrity, who have business experience, job production experience. Mr. Hubbard is one of those individuals. In fact, a man who I've known since high school. And that is why I asked him to be a member of this commission. So with that, I'm going to move approval of item 2.1. Yes, Mr. Supervisor Benoit?
I will, I'll be happy to second the motion. Clearly, Workforce Investment Board serves a very useful role. We have a number of people in our community who are involved in various enterprises in the community that employ people in the community that are members of that Board with a goal of trying to bring the group in that employs people to help us figure out how to get more of them employed. Is there a conflict in that, perhaps somewhat? But I don't think it's, rises to the level of being a concern, and I have full faith and confidence that Mr. Hubbard will do a great job on that Board. So I'm pleased to second the motion.
Yeah, just a query. I think it is the case that if there are discussions of training programs or funding of training programs, that would directly benefit or impact in some way AMR, I think Mr. Hubbard's going to have to step aside on those discussions. Isn't that not correct? County Council? This Board handles, what, in a year's period, over $20 million in federal job training funds. So it's important, just like other Boards, first five and rest of them, that when a member has a potential conflict, that they not participate. Will that be the case for Mr. Hubbard if this appointment goes through?
Yes, if there's any approval of any contracts or any matters that pertain to AMR, he would need to step aside and not vote or participate in any of the discussions on those matters.
Okay, nonetheless, I agree with both Supervisor Tabaloni and Supervisor Benoit. The healthcare field is going to be growing, just the medical roles are going to expand dramatically here over the next few years. And training is essential. There'll be a lot of new job opportunities, and someone like Peter Hubbard has the experience to know where training ought to be headed and what careers are going to, what types of training are going to produce the most amount of career opportunities for the young people here. He's, he's an expert in healthcare training, and he talks to a wide number of people. So he will be a valuable member of this Board. And again, he's going to, he's going to be, you know, everybody's watched nowadays on Boards to assure that they are not participating in areas where they have a conflict. So that will be the case for Mr. Hubbard.
All right, thank you for your comments. Do you have a motion?
As I say, Peter Hubbard will enrich this Board greatly. I think he'll be a valuable member.
Thank you. All right, we do have a motion in a second. Item 2.17, please. Motion is unanimous, 4-0. Taking us to our policy calendar, any items to be pulled by members of the Board? All right, I don't see any. I do have speakers on items 3-2, 3-5. And that is it, so I'll ask for a motion on items 3-1, 3-5, 4, with those exclusions. Please. Second motion, as Supervisor Ashley. Okay, motion is unanimous, 4-0. Taking us to our first pulled item by members of the audience, item 3.2. We do have Martin Sanderson, followed by Carol Bear.
Hello, I'm Martin Sanderson, and I'm supporting 3.2, I believe it is. And Supervisor Ashley, Chairman and Council. I'm a veteran, and there are quite a few veterans that live out in my community of Cabazan. And we are requesting that any EDA, something that can be done to stop the unfair competition from an organization out there that has property that takes away from our veterans' ability to give work, not takes away, but it's undue competition, it's on Elm Street. And you all, this Board, did a good job, that we think anyway, declaring it a public nuisance eight months ago, and it has yet, it has yet to abate. So that's what we're asking, a prioritization in funding for either a summary abatement or whatever you see fit. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's Carol, I hear, or 21 months ago. Carol Bear.
Good morning, my name's Carol Bear. I have two veterans in my household. Oh, I had, one is by now deceased, it's my oldest son. My veterans are very lucky that I send them after the military to universities, which is not the case with very many veterans in our area where we come from, as Mr. Ashley very well knows. Most veterans out there cannot even pick up a day's work as a day laborer, because like Mr. Sanderson alluded, we have a certain segment of the population which gets all the day work, never pays any taxes, people are not insured, and there is nothing coming back. And I would like you to rectify that problem, if possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carol.
I'll move approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Item 3.2, please. Motion is unanimous. Taking us to our next pulled item, 3.5. And our speaker is Michael Maldonado. Mr. Maldonado, please come forward.
Good morning, members of the Board, Council. My name is Michael Maldonado. I'm a local attorney, and my family are organic citrus growers for nearly a decade. I'm confused a little bit as to the 3.5 under the definition of producers. I'm uncertain whether or not that includes growers as well. I think I probably should direct that to County Council. My confusion comes from the fact that they also take soil samples under scope of work. And if in fact it does include growers, does it also include growers who are already being inspected by CCOF?
If you have a few minutes when we break from this matter, I can have the attorney that was participating in the drafting of this speak with you regarding the interpretation of this agreement.
Yeah, because at this point, if it does include growers, then I would be opposed to it, as we already have people that do spot inspections. And then my, my concerns would be what part of the county is doing it, what are their qualifications, all, the whole plethora of things. Because the people that do come down to do the certification and the spot inspections is now, are very knowledgeable and very helpful. I don't want to be caught somewhere in the crack between the two and then having to pay two fees and then have two different inspections. I want to make sure everybody's on the same page, so to speak. So we contacted CCOF, who actually regulates our grove. They had no idea that the county was doing this. So I'm, I'm looking at this, it seems like it's more dedicated to food handlers, farmers, Marcus restaurants. But the thing that throws me off is the soil sampling, which is something that CCOF does.
Let me, oh, okay. I'm going to ask our Act Commissioner's Office to respond to you very quickly.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Ron Bray with Act Commissioner's Office. This particular item is just as Mr. Maldonado's stated, the spot inspection program that we do. It's a small contract. We work with the State of California and the certifying agencies to perform the spot inspections. In fact, I think I've met Mr. Maldonado, and we'll be glad to talk with Mr. Maldonado and explain it further.
Okay, just for his purposes, though, before we approve this today, does not impact him, is that, is that?
It'll be the continued spot inspection program that we've done with his, his farm. It's the same program, just continuing for a new fiscal year. So no changes at all.
No changes in what you're already doing at this point in time, Mr. Maldonado?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, then with those clarifications, I want approval of item 3.5. Please.
I'll second it if somebody.
Motion is unanimous. That concludes our policy calendar. Now, taking us to our successor agency redevelopment agency meeting, we do have one request to speak on item 4.9. I'll move the balance, 4-1, 3-4, 12. Please.
Seconded by Supervisor Benoit.
Motion is unanimous. Item 4.9, Mr. Grant, please come forward.
Yes, I pulled this issue because Trumble Road, I've been to several meetings recently, and it's become a very important road for some reason or another. This field of dreams that you're asking for this money is justifying the road itself. But there's one Trumble, there's EMWD, and there's many other properties beside this. So the advantages, where are they going to? Are they going to other businesses? I have no idea. There's UPS is on one certain area there that's going to be, having difficulty in going through the widening of Trumble, according to the Menifee meeting that I went to. And is that, is that part of the road? There's no map, there's no indication of how this is. How do you, how do you resolve this problem of notifying the citizens of this county exactly what you're going to do in an illustration of this nature? I can't believe it. And yet, you're so satisfied, self-satisfied with your direction. And yet, I see a massive lack of indication of your direction. And for the people, this is not a good thing. And I anticipate to continue for the rest of my life trying to get you folks to notify the clarity and transparency of all the issues that you're dealing with. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Gary. I'll move approval of item 4.9.
I'll second it.
Please. Okay, motion is unanimous. Taking us to our Community Facilities District Legislative Body Meeting, items 8-1 through, 8-1A through J, is a resolutions for tax levies, enrollment of tax, special tax for facilities, facilities districts. I will move approval. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on items 8-1A through J? I see no one that I will move approval. Motion in a second, please. Motion is unanimous. Taking us to our 9:30 a.m. public hearings, first item, Auditor Controller's Public Hearing and Adoption of Ordinance Number 8168.10. Is anyone here to give a report on that? All right, appears not. Anyone here to speak on item 9.1? I see no one on close public hearing. Move approval of item 9.1. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Item 9.1. Okay. Motion is unanimous. Taking us to item 9.2, Community Health Agency Public Care and Adoption Resolution, Special Assessment, Unpaid Tax Trash Collection Fees. John.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, John Watkins, Deputy Director, Department of Environmental Health. This item will allow the placement of unpaid trash collection fees on the property tax bill. This is part of the mandatory trash collection program that's been instituted mostly countywide. In accordance with County Ordinance and Board Supervisors' directions, notices have been sent to both the property owner and tenant, if there is one, advising them of their bills. Environmental Health has also sent out notices and letters to the owners, given them some different options to take care of these issues, or make any corrections if there have been any errors. The list has been published in the newspaper, and some of the properties that were listed in the original listing of the Board Agenda Item, as well as in the newspaper, have been removed due to either errors that were found or payments been made in the meantime. If there are any residents here today that have some special circumstances would like consideration regarding the placement of this on the property taxes. We do have staff available in the lobby of the Board Room today that have been there since earlier this morning, as well as representatives from the trash collection companies that have these fees, that can take care of any other issues they may have right today. We still have the opportunity to avoid any of these charges to be placed on the property tax if there's reason for them to be removed. With that, the Department will not reimburse the hauler for these fees that we collect until we actually receive payment from the tax collector. Typically, in January, it will be our first payment will be given to them. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, John, Department over the past, this has been in force, or how many years now?
I believe about five years now.
Five years, okay.
Yes.
Time flies. I know from the results, that is, people coming down here calling our offices, it has been very few over those years. Usually, they're the landlord/tenant issue, which is, which can be complicated, even understand the reasons somebody could complain. Now, being in the recession, or do we have a much greater amount of delinquencies? Have you had to field many more questions about this?
Uh, no, we, we have, maybe there's just a few hundred more this year compared to last year that we have, but the questions we've been receiving in our office from the residents have been asking for arrangements for payment plans, which is something we're open to, that we try to facilitate, because we understand it can be difficult to meet some of this. So, that's really been the only thing we've been receiving at our office, and in discussions with the haulers, again, this morning, they were receiving similar requests like that, which we have-
All right, well, that's an excellent, excellent sign of the way the county and the haulers are handling this issue. We really appreciate it. Thanks. All right, thank you, Supervisor Buster. Thank you, John. We do have one speaker, Mr. Nathan Guerrero, and if anyone else is here to speak on item 9.2, this particular item, okay, if you'd come forward after Mr. Guerrero. Nathan, good to see you back.
Good doing, guys. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
You very seldom see me here anymore. I've got a lot of other things to do, and I, I'm gonna make a complaint, which I don't like to bother you people with. Even when the state or the county makes a mistake, like for instance, when they took my weapons away from me, and then found out later that they had blundered and gave them back to me. And another ordinance that you have where you can have electricity put on your property, like I have 10 acres, and I went after them, and they denied it to me, and yet they gave the same thing to two of my neighbors. Again, you never heard from me, I, I just don't want to come in and bother you guys a minute for nothing. But now this other thing that came up, $312.76 for trash collection. Boy, oh boy, did you guys screw up. And I'll tell you why. First of all, when CRNR signs a contract with me, I sign a contract with them. I owe them the money. No question about it. I owe them the money. But when they decide that they are gonna sign a contract with my tenants, and my tenants move off the property, and 30, or 60, or 90 days later, they don't remove the trash barrels, they don't send a notice, and they don't collect, think of what you people are doing. You are allowing CRNR to take advantage of the homeowner who's not responsible, he didn't sign the contract. The only thing that I could do in a case like this, if you gentlemen don't agree with me, is to go to a small claims court and show the courts. Now, look, I signed no contracts. I owe you nothing. Furthermore, when these people that you sign a contract with and don't pay you within 30 or 60 days, that should be the end of it. You don't continue on and let the bills grow so that you can go ahead and charge me $317 and $312 for what? I'm not responsible for that. Now what do I have to do? Go to a small claims court? Or should you gentlemen just, for instance, this is what I would, kind of think would be good, if you send CRNR a notice, if your people don't pay the bill in 30 days, that's the end of the, that deal, and that's, that's what they owe you, and nothing further than that. Not $317, that's, that's totally unfair.
Okay, Nathan, I, I know you've made your point, I think we all understand your, your concern. I believe that you are in Supervisor Ashley's district, I don't know whether you want to have further discussions.
I think, I think all I need can do is go out and, and those folks are outside, go out and talk to them about it, and see if you can get some arrangement, get taken off the roll, or work it out. We can't really do anything. The ordinance is clear, you know, and we, actually, we take the day, it really won't change.
Yes, but don't you think that maybe something should be done? Let CRNR know that, look, after 30 days, if they don't pay you, don't continue on sending a bill and expecting to get paid, because now you know that you can knock the landlord.
No, that, that makes sense. I would go, that makes some sense.
That's, that's not fair, you know?
Nathan, well, let me ask, as Supervisor Ashley suggested, that you go and talk with Ted, or is John? John's advice, go out in the, in the lobby here and speak with the folks.
Oh, sure, sure.
And there, you know, there's always room to fine tune this, this stuff, so-
Yeah, yeah, I mean, look, I'm not accusing you guys of being-
I might be a little-
Negligent at all. I don't, I don't think that's so. But when you look at it, you'd see, you can't allow CRNR-
I understand.
To get in line with this thing.
We'll take a look at it. Stephen Stockham, it's always good to see you, Nathan.
Okay, take care.